I will call this meeting of the Winter Board of Health to order. My name is Bill Schmidt and I'm vice chair of the Board of Health. With me is Susan McGuire, who is a member of the Board of Health. There's currently one vacancy on the Board of Health. This meeting is being recorded and may be televised at some point by WCAT. Even though not required by law, the Board of Health is holding this public hearing because of the broad interest in tobacco control and to provide a public forum for comments from all interested parties. A legal notice appeared in the Winter transcript on January 18th regarding this public hearing. Copies of the proposed regulation were delivered to all current holders of tobacco product sales permits in the town of Winthrop. This public hearing is to discuss proposed changes to the regulation of the Winter Board of Health restricting the sale of tobacco products. Copies of the proposed regulation has been posted on the Winter Board of Health website and are available here in the back there at this meeting as well if folks haven't had a chance to look at them. Hopefully they have. The mission of the Winter Board of Health is to protect, promote, and regulate public health of the town of Winthrop. The Board of Health assumes a proactive approach in dealing with the challenges of public health. The Board of Health is granted authority by Massachusetts General Law to make reasonable health regulations. The proposed changes to the current regulations are based on the sincere belief that they will benefit the public health of our fellow citizens in the town of Winthrop. As the purpose of this public hearing is to collect information and opinions, the Board will not ask for a vote from the audience, nor will the Board itself vote on the proposed regulation at this public hearing. The Board may discuss and vote on the proposed regulation at its February meeting, which is now scheduled for Tuesday, the 27th, at 5:00 PM in the Harvey Hearing Room at Winthrop Town Hall. In addition to tonight's public hearing, the Board will accept written testimony until Wednesday, January 31st. Comments can be submitted to the Winter Board of Health, care of 100 Kennedy Drive, Winthrop, Mass. 02152. The draft regulation, which is the subject of tonight's public hearing, contains nine changes to the current regulations and I'll outline them as follows. Number one, the proposal raises the minimum legal sales age from 18 to 21. Number two, it limits flavored other tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, to adult-only retail tobacco stores. Number three, bans product sales in healthcare institutions, including pharmacies. Four, bans the sale of blunt wraps. Five, reduces the number of tobacco sales permits to be issued from 20 to 18. Six, requires single cigars to be sold for at least $2.50 and multi-packs of two or more cigars for at least $5. Seven, prevents tobacco sales permits to be issued to new retailers within 500 feet of a school. Eight, extends the enforcement or tolling period from 24 months to 36 months. And nine permits the non-renewal of a tobacco sales permit to a retailer with three illegal sales to a minor within a year. Now let me talk about the ground rules for tonight. First of all, we appreciate everyone taking the time to be here this evening. However, in the interest of time, we ask that you adhere to the following ground rules. One, please sign in, there's a sign-in sheet in the rear, if you wish to be recorded in favor or in opposition to the proposed regulation, and if you wish to speak. So that means even if you don't wish to speak, you can at least be recorded in favor or in opposition. Number two, when addressing the Board of Health, you must first identify yourself by name, your address, and any professional affiliation you may have that impacts your comments. So if you are a lobbyist, if you are a retail owner, et cetera, you should identify. Three, identify the issue or issues of the proposal that you wish to comment on. So for instance, out of the nine that I outline, maybe you only wish to speak about one or two. So that would be helpful if you mentioned which specific issues. Four, please limit your comments to three minutes. We will have a person here, a timekeeper, who will keep track of that and hold a sign when there's one minute left. That's so other members of the audience will have a chance to speak. Of course, if you had a presentation that's long enough, you can always submit that, but I think you should be able to get the gist of your argument across in three minutes. Please be considerate of those persons speaking, whether you agree or disagree, and refrain from commenting out of turn. Six, as I said, a written comment period for those who are unable to speak tonight or attend, or if somebody here doesn't feel comfortable in speaking but still wants to submit something in writing. Again, you can do that, as I said, that's until the end of the month. Hopefully this won't happen, but any person who is showing verbal disrespect to anyone speaking will be asked to leave the public hearing. We will accept, first of all, testimony in favor of the proposed regulation. Secondly, we'll follow that by testimony in opposition to the proposed regulation. We may have questions. If somebody raises a question, we might follow up with a question, but we're not going to be answering questions in general. Our purpose here is to accept testimony for our consideration. Your input is valuable to the Board of Health and your concerns will be taken seriously before the final regulation is finalized. And I thank you all for your cooperation. So first of all, as I said, we will take those who are going to speak in favor. I ask you come up to the podium. Again, state your name, your address, any affiliation, and we'll keep track of your Who wants to go first in favor?
Hello, I'm Dr. Lester Hartman.
And I presume you have signed in?
I signed in.
Okay. I'm going to ask that of everybody.
I live at 185 Manning Street in Needham, the first place in the world to go to 21. I have been, this is my third time here as a pediatrician, and I am in favor of all the regulations. I'm especially involved, this is my 168th meeting, Board of Health meeting, I've gone to in this process, of which 70% of the Commonwealth is under the Tobacco 21 Regulation. And we have 167 towns as of now going to 21. So, and I'm wearing Abraham Lincoln, interestingly today, because he asked Grant to quit smoking his cigars. Grant died of throat cancer as a result of his cigar use, and Lincoln wrote in articles about how people who smoke get what's called consumption, which is now known as cancer today. Nicotine is the most addictive substance that we have. The intent of all that's being used right now, and maybe my focus will be a little bit more on vape today. I've talked about the Tobacco 21 regulation around cigarettes, but I'm going to also show you some of the products quickly. Cigareos, great flavor, fully intended to attract youth. This is not for adults. The FDA banned flavored cigarettes in 2007, so the industry changed, increased the weight by putting wellbore gypsum in it to make it a heavier substance and called it a cigareo, so that it also avoids cigarette tax. The other thing is wonderful dip, which causes mouth cancer as well, and kids use this in hockey. They put it between their fingers, like the Russians, make a slice, and they say it makes them a little bit more focused. But obviously, you know, oral cancer in baseball was a huge problem because of dip. In addition, I wanted to show you, and I'm going to show you a vape pen, but this is e-juice. This one is, I don't know, I think it's equivalent to like cotton candy flavor. A havoc teacher just killed a three-year-old, and they didn't have child protector caps on it for a while, so kids died, kids were, there was a fourfold increase into emergency rooms as well. Thirdly, I want to show you the new thing called Juuling. If you look at this, what do you see here that's different on this computer? What is this, what do you think this is? What do you think it could be interpreted as to the parents? A Wi-Fi device? All right? So then what you do is you take a cartridge that looks like, I don't know if I have it here, I don't know if I, that looks like in fact, oh, here it is, it's already here. What does that look to you?
USB.
USB or flash drive. Stick it right in and inhale. It's equivalent to about a pack of cigarettes with this. Highly, highly addictive, and 90% of lifetime users of tobacco and nicotine products began before the age of 21, and 95% of 21. So I'm not going to bring much more into this, because it's obvious that the Commonwealth is trending towards this, and as far as the economic argument, that's not a Board House job. When you put, when places have gone to 21, there's only been a 3% reduction in revenue in tobacco when we've gone to 21, according to an article we wrote for the American Journal of Public Health. So I don't have anything more to say, but I just want to show you, the products indict themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, we can applaud both sides if you want. Anyone else who is in favor who wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is DJ Wilson. I'm the Tobacco Control Director at Mass Municipal Association. You have seen some of these lists before. I just have given you three tonight, this list of cities and towns that have moved from age 18 to 21. The second is those cities and towns, there's 109 in total, that have restricted flavor products to qualifying adult-only retail tobacco stores. And the third, I list those cities and towns that have banned the sale of tobacco products in pharmacies. So you've seen these lists before, I've talked about the public health rationale behind it. I do want to note that one thing, especially because the, in favor going first, that one thing that we have always, that always has been a constant in this whole fight for the last 23 years for the state's tobacco control program, is profit motive. It has always been the other side wanting to maximize profit by selling as much product as possible. They are fantastic at playing a whack-a-mole game with us, we are always behind them. They'll come out with something different and new every time, and in fact Philip Morris is introducing a new product to the FDA on tomorrow, Wednesday. So the reason that anybody here is against this is not because they don't, they don't want their kids to smoke, they've seen people die in their life who smoked, but it's to make as much money as possible for themselves, for the tobacco industry, and for the shareholders. So if we can always make sure to put, what the two, two of the three original goals of the state program, keep kids from smoking or becoming addicted to nicotine, and helping adults quit. Those are our goals, they are not the tobacco industry's goals. Thank you.
Anyone else in favor? Again, I'm going to ask people, make sure you've signed in, please. Identify who you are.
Good evening. I'm Jonina Goranstein, and I manage a tobacco cessation and prevention program at Mass General Hospital, and I have worked in the Winthrop, I've spoken in the Winthrop community before. There are just two brief points I would like to make. One in particular about restricting flavors, and as people have said, the purpose of these regulations is to prevent tobacco initiation, which we know may not kill you today, but can certainly cause morbidity, mortality down the road, and does, and is responsible for more than a half a million deaths a year in this country still. So the purpose is to try to prevent youth from starting, and I just want to make a couple of points about flavors. We already know that flavors attract youth, and the federal government, in the form of a VA, has essentially acknowledged that in 2009 when they banned flavors in cigarettes, which left the door open to these other products being put on the market and being sold with flavors. And predictably, they attract youth, and since that time in 2009, the sale and the use of these products has skyrocketed, these particular flavored products by youth in And research findings on the effect of flavors in these other tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, mirror the original research from 2009, in that a 2013-14 path study from it, almost 81% of 12- to 17-year-olds who had ever used a tobacco product initiated with a flavored tobacco product. So flavors is what draws kids in, and what gets them hooked, and what ultimately becomes an addiction to nicotine. The other thing, I did have occasion to read in the newspaper today about the Board of Health's presentation in front of the city council, and I just wanted to just preemptively talk a little bit about the military, and that is, call your attention to an Institute of Medicine study commissioned by the military, I believe it was, in 2009, precisely to address the problem of tobacco in the military and its negative effects on things like troop readiness and health and whatnot. So if you have a chance to look at that, it's, tobacco is very much an issue for the military and troop readiness. Thank you.
Thank you. I will also mention that we have received a letter from Jonina, so that is also going to be part of the record. Anyone else who wants to speak in favor?
Hello, I'm Ken Farbstein of the NIAHTAX Foundation Network for the Improvement of Addiction Treatment, and I live in Needham, Massachusetts. I wanted to speak particularly on the first and second issues of age 21 and the flavor restriction. I'm going to support all of them. I have a letter of support that I'd like to leave with you if I can, and to begin by saying I really appreciate the conscientiousness of this board. I know you're thoroughly already done your homework, already are familiar with the Institute of Medicine report, the strong recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics, the 2016 report as Surgeon General on e- use by youth, and the formal endorsements of Tobacco 21 by the American Academy of Pediatrics, Mass Hospital Association, Mass Association of Boards of Health, American Medical Association, American Heart Association, American Cancer Society, American Lung Association, and dozens of other public health organizations, and the New York Times. I know that you know all that, I don't mean to preach or convert it. There was something, though, however, today, this morning, the National Academy of Sciences released a very comprehensive report. In my mind, there's, in terms of reliability, there's God, and then there's the National Academy of Sciences. The Academy concluded, in conclusion 81, or rather 16-1, there is substantial evidence, quote, "There is substantial evidence that e-cigarette use increases risk of ever using combustible tobacco cigarettes among youth and young adults." I want to, the focus here, I think today's, tonight's discussion, I hope, will be on the effect on youth, not on whether it might be a cessation device for middle-aged people, you know, or my age, but youth. And so their conclusion was specifically about substantial evidence for youth. And another conclusion, there is substantial evidence that e-cigarette use results in symptoms of dependence on e-cigarettes. So I'd like to leave this with you also, if I can. The headline of the New York Times, the electronic version today, "Vaping Can Be Addictive and May Lure Teenagers to Smoking," Science Panel concludes. I can read that one as well. And just last, it may be reassuring, you've heard talking about this already, some of the people who work in this store, the vendors may not have heard this, that in the town of Needham, which was the first in the country, as Dr. Hartman said, to adopt age 21, that there is a formal statement that I submitted from the Director of Economic Development of Needham, that no convenience stores have gone out of business in the 10 or 12 years since they did that, and the statement by the head of the National Association of Tobacco Outlets, NATO, Thomas Ryan, the executive director, who said that in his experience, this is the trade association president, in his experience that the age 21 by a town results in about 3% loss of revenue. So I hope that you will relate it as a safety. Thanks for your consideration.
Anyone else who wants to speak in favor?
Well, my name is Bonnie Carroll. I'm the Director of the Six-City Tobacco Initiative, which includes the town of Winthrop. And I live in Somerville, and I just wanted to thank you for your conscientiousness in looking at these issues. I support all of the model regulations as they are presented, and I just wanted to add that since the people who are for the change are going first, that sometimes at these hearings, I notice that the issue comes up of comparing flavored tobacco products to flavored alcohol. And I think that that's confusing and not exactly accurate, because we may discuss whether or not flavored alcohol is a good thing in terms of youth, but it's very separate than what we're talking about with flavored tobacco products. So I encourage the Board to really take the flavor issue seriously, and I appreciate how much you've already done to educate yourself about these issues.
Just one, just one thing also, as I said, urging people, not only, if you are speaking in favor, to stay to hear the opposition, which would be an education, as well as you may want to counteract it at some point, with written testimony. We won't open up again for verbal tonight from those in favor, but you still have time to submit testimonies. If you hear something on either side, quite frankly, at some point you didn't have a chance to address in your remarks, and you want to submit testimony, you do have that time until the 31st. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Jean Margio. I'm a resident of Winthrop. And I want to speak to something that was said at the council meeting the other day. You are all here to listen to the Board of Health's opinion of people's agreement or disagreement about this rule. One of the comments that was made is that we are trying to take away people's rights. I think that's unfortunate that it was presented in that way. The Board of Health's responsibility is to look out for the health and well-being of all of its citizens, children, young adults, adults, senior citizens. To say and to use the military as an example, that we would deprive a soldier from smoking, I think is an absurd statement to present. I don't think there's anyone in this room who would not say that we all respect and admire any, anyone who has entered the military at whatever age to defend and protect our country. To say that we are trying to take away the right of an 18-year-old soldier from smoking is a terrible way to look at it. We are trying to protect the health of that soldier. Unfortunately, many of our soldiers, maybe sometimes they do depend on cigarettes because they're put under tremendous stress, but later on in life, and I'm sure as one of the speakers said, you're going to find that in medical records, many of our soldiers have some kind of a medical condition that can be contributed to cigarette smoking. So to say that we are against people's rights is unfair. We are here to protect all of our citizens in whatever capacity they serve this country to protect they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Nick Seodes, Precinct 5, and I'm going to speak in favor of raising the age to 21. I'm educated in the Boston public school system, and I've seen what tobacco, nicotine, and drugs have done to some of my students in a negative way. I'd like to just make a couple of comments here initially. The Federal Center for Disease Control reports that 75% of adults support raising the age to 21, including 70% of current smokers. So that's the first thing I want to establish, that we are the adults. We should know through our maturity and through our life experiences that this is going to be a negative impact on high school students, middle school students, if we do not raise this age limit. Second thing I want to mention, raising the minimum legal sales to 21 will reduce tobacco and nicotine addiction among youth, which will help improve health, save lives, and reduce healthcare costs that run into the millions. The last fact I want to say is, raising the age limit to 21 is an effective strategy which will reduce youth tobacco use, and it will also limit access to high school students. I have to totally agree with Ms. Margio about what she said as well, about the military service and cutting people's rights. I'd just like to say, in addition to this, that we have a serious opioid problem in this country. We have a serious opioid problem in Winthrop, Massachusetts. We're no different than any other community. There's many, many in this community, families who have suffered through different types of addictions. We had a tremendous conference at Town Hall this summer, we had people speaking that had alcohol addiction, narcotics addiction, and every story was heart-wrenching. We have to really seriously look at our community. I know personally, three students who probably graduated 18 years ago, their class, three 35-year-old young men have passed away from some type of opioid addiction. This is a very serious matter that we're taking up tonight, and I hope that everybody looks at this in a serious way. This is not about profiting and making money, I've had a business in this town too, and I think it's very, very important that we take a serious look of raising this age limit to 21. I think it's going to be beneficial to the educators of this town. There's a problem with vaping at the high school now, and the first thing you'll see walking into school is that it is against school policy to vape, et cetera. And there have been a number of incidents that have taken place. Superintendent is doing a great job, Lisa Howard's doing a fantastic job, Principal Crombie, and the rest of the staff at the high school. It's very, very important that we do not take this as a light matter. This is a very serious matter, it's probably one of the most serious matters this town takes up, and voting to raise the age limit to 21 will have a great impact on the future of this town.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Hi, I'm Tracy Hahnin. I'm from Winthrop, and I'm a former member of the Board of Health. I just want to reiterate something I hear a lot that comes up in these tobacco meetings. It's the issue of serving in the military, and you know, if our troops are old enough to serve in the military and go to war, well, they should be old enough to smoke. I found an article here from the Tobacco Free Kids Organization. There's a lot of opinions from the military in regards to tobacco use, and I'd like to read some to you here. Tobacco companies have a long history of promoting tobacco to members of the military and have a vested interest in tobacco use by the military, an important market for recruitment of the next generation of smokers. Raising the tobacco sale age to 21 will help prevent our service members from starting to use this deadly and addictive product and support DOD efforts to reduce tobacco use among service members. Tobacco use is bad for military preparedness. The military recognizes the negative impact of tobacco on troop readiness and soldiers' health, and has initiated a series of its own actions to curb tobacco use in the military. The Department of Defense and the Army, the Navy, Marines, and Air Force have each set goals to become tobacco-free. In April 2016, Secretary of Defense Carter approved actions to ensure a comprehensive tobacco policy that assists with preventing initiation of tobacco use, helping those who want to quit using tobacco succeed, and decreasing exposure to secondhand smoke for all of our people. Our military leaders understand the toll tobacco takes on our troops. Below, there are some very specific quotes from military leaders in this, and I'm going to leave this with you when I leave the podium. While tobacco use takes an enormous toll on all users, it has particularly detrimental consequences for active military members. Tobacco use reduces soldiers' physical fitness and endurance and is linked to higher rates of absenteeism and lost productivity. In addition, service members who use tobacco are more likely to drop out of basic training, sustain injuries, and have poor vision, all of which comprises compromise troop readiness. Tobacco use places a significant burden on the Department of Defense. The Department of Defense spends more than $1.6 billion each year on tobacco-related medical care, increased hospitalizations, and lost days of work. And I'd just like you to consider that, if your argument has to be about military.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Let me just also remind folks that you can also register at the table. Should all be registered if you want to have to be recorded. So you can register in either in favor or in opposition, even if you don't want to speak. So since I don't see anyone else who wishes to speak in favor at this time, I will now ask people who are in opposition to speak. Again, the same rules. We would ask you to identify yourself, any affiliation you have, whether you're a business or whatever. Again, the three-minute rule. And if there are particular sections that you want to talk about, please mention those so we know exactly what your concerns are.
May I?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you. I'd also like to prevent, present you, if I may, with about 600 pages of data and articles. And there is also a thumb drive in there. Okay. So my name is Dennis Lane. I've been before you before, and thank you for the opportunity again. I'm with the Coalition for Responsible Retailing. I'm based out of Quincy, Massachusetts. I'm here to represent the interest of retailers and to also partner with the Board of Health to prevent tobacco from falling into the hands of underage folks. And I did sign in. So with that being said, I'd like to begin by saying that, in my opinion, flavor bans don't work. Andover has banned flavors, yet they're seeing an increase in vaping in the high school. And there is an article in that packet that supports that. Moshfields has banned flavors, but they're seeing an increase in vaping. And there's also an article in the packet that supports that. We strongly believe that possession, use, and purchase laws are a viable solution to reducing youth access that have, and we provided you within the packet. And I have copies here for you that I'll give to you when I'm done. We provided you with model regulations to talk about the effectiveness in implementing purchase, use, and possession laws. And I think as a retailer for 44 years, and I consider myself a gatekeeper in my community for keeping tobacco out of the hands of minors. And I think that every responsible retailer should be a gatekeeper and that any responsible retailer who is not a gatekeeper and who does not prevent tobacco from falling into the hands of young people should be fined and ultimately lose their permit. We do not support retailers selling to minors. We think that it's a horrible, terrible thing. So with that being said, we're not looking to criminalize the possession of tobacco with young people. But we think that there should be parity with the way that alcohol is treated, as there is with tobacco. So I have here a great game and a great nip. And I have here a mango game and a mango nip. And I have a whole bag full for every flavor that exists in tobacco or in blunt wraps and in tobacco products. It also exists in alcohol. You walk into any liquor store, there's a rack at the front of the store full of 99-cent nips, and there are all sorts of exotic flavors. But with that being said, it's 100% against the law for young people to purchase or possess or use alcohol. But even though it's illegal for a retailer to sell to a minor, it is not illegal for a minor to possess tobacco. So if through the internet, social sources, an older brother, a friend, a young person gets tobacco, they can sit on the steps of the police station and they can smoke a cigarette because it's not illegal. So I believe it's almost to the point of insanity that there are laws that protect young people from using and abusing and possessing alcohol. But the same such rules do not exist for tobacco. So, and soon you'll be dealing with marijuana, and you're going to have the same issues. So I'd just like to say that adults use flavors. They use vape. A lot of adults, in my 44-year experience, I've got customers that are buying two, three packs a day sometimes. And they've transitioned to alternative vaping or e-cigarettes. And, and when I see them in my store and I say, "How's that working for you?" They say, "I'm not smoking cigarettes anymore." And I know there's a debate about whether or not e-cigarettes are any better or worse for you. But in my opinion, transitioning someone from, from a cigarette that's lit to a device that just heats the product, it seems like it's a better option for a lot of my customers who are smoking multiple packs of cigarettes a day. So I strongly, strongly suggest that you adopt purchase and possession laws. If you do go to 21, you're supporting the argument that, that retailers should be able to sell age-restricted products to people who are of legal age. So if you adopt the age of 21 for tobacco, we, and, and support that, we believe that you should also treat that 21-plus age-restricted product exactly the same way as you treat alcohol and exactly the same way as in the future you'll need to treat marijuana. I've given you data that is 600, that is about 600 pages and a thumb drive. And this is not, this isn't hype. This isn't industry data. This is, this is data from the public health community, from the Center for Disease Control, the College of Physicians, from the FDA. That is legitimate data. It's not hype. I expect that as a responsible Board of Health, and once again, thank you for letting me come before you again. I would hope that you're going to make decisions after reviewing all of that data. And I know there's a tremendous amount of information there. And I would expect that you'll have plenty of questions and that my contact information's in there. You will email me. And I will certainly make myself available to come back before the Board of Health. And I know there's a tremendous amount of data in there. I'd certainly want to come back and have the opportunity. I expect to have the opportunity to come back and answer any questions that is in that data. And the last thought that I would like to leave you with is that Winthrop's community standards really need to be. The question tied is, can a responsible retailer in Winthrop sell flavored products? If, if a responsible retailer in Winthrop can sell a pineapple nip or a grape nip, then a responsible retailer in Winthrop should be able to sell to an adult of legal age a pineapple or a grape tobacco product. And I would ask that you not restrict flavors, that you not place pricing bans on tobacco. You allow the fact that retailers, for the most part, are responsible. They're the gatekeeper. They're the ones that are actually keeping, working hard to keep the products out of the hands of young people and allow folks of legal age to make a responsible decision whether or not they want to use these products. And I thank you very much for your time.
We didn't let you go a little bit long and explain because I know you were representing probably several people.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Nisar. N-I-S-A-R-G. Patel, P-A-T-E-L. I live in this town. I own several businesses in this town as well. So I do not have, I have some problems with this.
Do you own a?
Retail store and the liquor store as well. So it's a, a community store and a liquor store. So as a retailer, so I have no issue changing the, the age limit to 21-plus. Because cigarettes are bad, and changing it to 21-plus is, it's the right thing to do. However, having that only, adult-only stores or getting rid of flavors, it's, it's not right. Because one of the, one of the articles in this pamphlet says, 18.1% of current smoker aged under 18 years reported that usually directly purchase their product cigarettes at stores, community store. So 18%, so out of 100, 18, only 18 kids get it somehow from the community store where they shouldn't be selling it. So other 82 kids get it from their friends or whatever, you know. So, so most of those underage kids, they get it from their friends or, or older brother or whoever that is. So most of the time, community stores, you know, they, they are very strict about selling it to minors. And we, as a 12-years, never sold any cigarettes to a minor or gotten it, you know. So also, flavor-wise, going to alcohol or you mentioned the 3% total revenue loss. But that's really because they changed it to 21-plus, not to get rid of flavors. They do have flavors. If they got rid of flavors, I guarantee you it was a lot lower. And, and kids, if they really wanted, if you don't have flavors, I mean, they will go next town over. I mean, be not too far away from Revere or East Boston when they can get it, you know. And I think that wouldn't stop kids from, from smoking flavors or not. Also, on to his point, there should be some kind of regulation about, you know, if kids had cigarette or vape in school, that shouldn't bring, you know, vapor in school, just like, you know, knife or cig, or alcohol bringing to school and getting in trouble, you know. And the same thing, if a kid has a vape or anything like that, it was underage, bringing to school, that should be a fine or, or some kind of, some kind of solution. Probably, you know, some kind of, first of all, consequences for, for bringing that in there. So all I say, you know, from this point, that 21-plus is, is okay as a retailer. I have no issue changing the age. But, but the flavor or, or having only adult-only stores, it's not okay, a right thing to do, I think, just, so.
Can I ask, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah.
So do you have an idea of what percentage of your business is flavored tobacco product?
So a lot of time now, I think it's not new, new. I mean, you have new peoples trying tobacco flavored stuff. It's people that are trying to get off cigarettes. They're trying to go on, on e-cigarettes to stop smoking. Also, a lot of those flavored cigars and, and stuff like that, I mean, they're not, you know, using, I, I personally, I don't think they use it to just smoke flavored cigars. They use that as, as a bong or play, you know, smoking marijuana and stuff like that, most of the time. I, I think personally, but, and that's.
You're talking about blunt wraps?
Yes, yeah.
You know, we're banning blunt wraps.
Right, right, right. But that's, and that's what I'm saying. That's not, so you say if you ban blunt wrap, you should ban like a bomb or something like that.
Well, we only have, we only have authority over tobacco.
So, so, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
So do you sell, do you sell blunt wraps?
No, I do not sell blunt wraps. So, but the problem is, you, you, you hurting retailers by taking this stuff where they are, you know, they're trying to make sure that they don't get to wrong hands or underage kids, you know. They will find it somehow. Also, making it 21-plus, it will be harder and I think for them to start because their friends will, you know, that's a big wide range of difference between a 17-year-old and a 21-year-old. That would make dramatic changes for younger-aged kids to, to stop smoking. But the flavor has no effect of somebody to stop smoking.
Just also for your information, Boston has banned flavored, limited to adult-only. So Boston has done it.
Boston, yeah, my, but Revere, I mean, Chelsea, I mean, that's.
Well, Chelsea, Chelsea has as well.
But not the flavor, too.
Yeah. I have a list right here.
Okay.
But you're correct about Revere.
Right.
But, but Boston, Chelsea have banned.
The flavor blunt wraps, not everything flavors, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And yet, right.
Yep.
Okay, but the, the thing is, it's, it's, limiting flavors, it just doesn't, you know, it's not going to change the fact that they're using it and not using it, you know, flavored tobacco, or flavored vape. It's kids, if you make it 21-plus, I guarantee you that, that percentage of kids using it will, it will dramatically go down and not.
That's what I'm trying to get at, and then.
Because it's a problem because a lot of people that are trying to quit smoking cigarettes, that's the 35 or 40-year-old that's been smoking, that, that using it to, to stop smoking cigarettes.
No, I, I understand that. What I'm saying is.
Most of my customers that, that use, they're over age of 30, I think, you know. They're, most of my customers that use flavored stuff.
Really? Okay. All right, well, thank you, sir. Anyone else who wants to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Nicholas John. I'm the Northeast Region Manager for the R Street Institute. I'm a Boston resident. I signed in at the table.
You guys, I appreciate that.
And I'm here to speak in opposition to provisions relative to certain flavored products. Before I begin, I'd like to briefly thank Mr. Schmidt and Ms. McGuire for allowing me to present past meetings and for keeping me in the loop up to this point. Also, you have my comprehensive written testimony electronically and paper from the last meeting, subsequent meeting, which I'll happily resubmit if needed.
Oh, you don't have to do that. We'll cut that.
Thank you. I was here early on in this process when we were going through the amendments line by line. That evening, this board moved to increase fines and penalties for those found in violation of existing regulations. I'm not here to speak in opposition to the 21-plus move. I'm not here to talk about the economic impact or lack thereof for businesses. But this is a question of access. By instituting these regulations in their current form, this body would significantly limit access to safer alternatives while allowing the most harmful and widely-used products to remain on store shelves in plain sight. I urge the members of this board to consider the potential of greater options to offer more paths away from harmful and combustible tobacco products. It's a question of access. You know, while we are here to talk about children and the impacts, we want to keep them away from nicotine and tobacco. The other side of the coin is that by removing those safer alternatives, if somebody were able to access them as a child or an adult, you no longer can if they're not there, if you can't legally have a way to get them. And if you're going to increase the age to 21-plus anyway, then wouldn't you rather have somebody use a safer alternative than pick up a combustible tobacco product? And for those who recently made the switch or are considering it to use a less harmful alternative, if that path is all of a sudden removed, but the cigarettes are still remaining on all the store shelves, how far out of their way is somebody going to go to make that better choice? Because you made it more difficult to do that. That being said, I respectfully urge the members of this board to consider the potential of greater options to offer more paths away from combustible tobacco products. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wants to speak in opposition?
My name is Mark Hankley. I am representing Energy North Group out of Lawrence, Massachusetts. And I only wish to speak on the flavors and the pricing.
So what's that, Energy North Group?
Energy North Group.
Where'd you say they were?
Lawrence, Massachusetts. We run the energy to go store in Winthrop.
Oh, okay, I see.
So on the, I agree with the other speakers on the flavor. We just want to be treated fairly and be able to sell a legal product to adults in the same way that we sell cigarettes and in the same way that liquor stores in the communities are able to sell flavored products to adults. As for the pricing, the $5 minimum on two or more cigars can actually negatively impact residents of Winthrop who don't have the resources to go to other communities that don't have the minimum. So in a way, I, as a retailer, actually end up making more money off of any of the residents who continue to buy the product at $5. And we'd rather keep the product at a lower price in order to be fair to our customers.
So, okay. Did you have something else?
No, that was it. Thank you.
I wanted to ask you one question, if I can find it in my notes. I probably don't have it here. No, I don't think I have. But thank you. So those two issues, we'll keep track of. Anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Rich Curryer Jr. I'm a 50-some-year resident of the town of Winthrop, Precinct Five. I just have a couple of concerns in that, one, if this passes, could the next step be sugary drinks? Would you start looking at Coke and Pepsi banning those from stores, retail establishments in the town because of the obesity? Could noise pollution be another factor where, like work line, you ban leaf blowers, potentially snow blowers or other types of loud devices? I, I think we have to look at this in a, in a general sense and, and come up with a plan to, to combat smoking in the schools. And I just don't think that raising it from 18 to 21 is, is the, is the end-all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm here for or against, but I'd like to speak.
You can be right down the middle.
Okay. My name's E.J. Monahan. And I've been a Winthrop resident my whole life, born and raised. And I think I just want to talk about experience for me personally, growing up in this town.
Sure.
When I was fourteen, I looked eighteen. I could walk in anywhere and buy tobacco products. When I was eighteen, I looked twenty-five and go buy alcohol. And most of the time, I just walked to the next town. But for me, it was a challenge. It wasn't a matter of whether or not there was a law or more legislation or red tape. And I don't know if teenagers are given the same viewpoint as we do as adults. So perhaps that comes into play for them. And like Mr. Currier said, I don't know if more legislation is going to make us more pragmatic. I think maybe it needs to start at the lower-level education. The parents need to be involved. The education needs to start young, not using tobacco products. And we can put all the red tape we want up top, but if these kids already grow up without any discipline regarding tobacco, then we're fighting an uphill battle. So I think we need to find a solution in which we all give a little, come to a solid idea, instead of just banning this and banning that and changing this. Let's get down to the grassroots of the problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wants to speak for, against, or somewhere in between? Yes, sir.
My name is Y.N.W.A.V.L. I sign here.
What was it again?
Y.N.W.A.V.L.
Okay. And you signed it?
I signed it. I own a store in the D and T market. I buy the store like one month ago and already have, like, flavored cigarettes. And I worked for Winthrop like nine months. Because most of my customer is up between twenty-five to thirty-five.
Twenty-five, thirty-five.
Yeah. And I asked him, if one cigarette, if one cigarette, if one cigarette, if one cigarette, you take, like, flavor, where do you buy? He said, "I can buy it from everywhere." We lose money for this. If you take flavor, we lose money. We lose business. Here, you can jump on bus and go next town, it's like two minutes, three minutes everywhere. You buy all flavor. It's not only buy flavor. If I am customer, I go buy cigarette, I buy drink, I buy food. You don't come my store. This is my issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor, in opposition? In case anybody came in late, I'll take any other speakers. Seeing that there's not, we'll close this portion of the hearing at six fifty-five. We explain what's going to happen next. First of all, thank you all for coming. And we've taken notes. Susan is taking notes. I appreciate the materials. Again, I'll reiterate, if you want to submit written testimony, you have until the thirty-first. Appreciate everybody for coming. We will take all of this information, including the six hundred pages, under consideration. I can't guarantee I'm going to read it one night. Our purpose will be to deliberate on this. We may take up the regulation on our next meeting in February, which is February twenty-seventh at five o'clock in the Harvey Hearing Room at the Winthrop Town Hall. Not guaranteed, but our agenda will be posted in advance of that meeting. So if we are going to discuss this issue and vote on it, it will be posted. So folks will be able to come. And let me say to you also that, in my experience, not necessarily with this board, but in other boards, that testimony that we do receive does have an impact. And I have seen other regulations be modified based on testimony. So I do appreciate everybody coming tonight and sharing their opinion. I will move to adjournment. Favor? So adjourn the meeting at six fifty-seven. Thank you.